Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, July 15, 2024, to order, and I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Clerk Tammer, call the roll, please.
Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo, absent, Park.
Here.
Udara.
Here.
Castillo.
Here.
Mardini, absent, Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Beremis, absent, 11 present, 3 absent.
11 present, 3 absent. We have a quorum. We're on to item two, receipt of written communications from the public. Does anyone have a written communication that he or she would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand.
May I just also inform that there are some on board docs too at the dais?
All right. All right. Thank you. Clerk Tammer is advising that there were some written communications that are on the dais for the alderman to take a look at. All right. We're going to move on to public forum. This is an opportunity for any person to speak about any topic of which is of their choosing. In order to accommodate all of the speakers and to allow the council to proceed with its business, we're going to ask that everyone -- it's our rule that you limit your comments to three minutes. When you're called, we'll ask that you step to the microphone to the back, pull the microphone down so that it meets your physique, state your name, address is optional. If you did not get an opportunity to sign in and you wish to speak, I will call for that at the end after those who have signed in have completed their comments. With that, Clerk Tammer.
We have Lynn McCready.
My name is Lynn McCready, and I live at 440 South Kennelworth in Elmhurst. In 1732, Dr. Thomas Fuller wrote, "He that plants trees loves others besides himself." What did he mean by that? Because a tree can take anywhere from 30 to 70 years to reach full maturity, its true beauty and benefit is not likely to be enjoyed by the planter, but rather those who will live long after he is gone. Unfortunately, it takes a crew of men with chainsaws only a day to cut one down. At the last city council meeting, a resident spoke about the mature trees housed at 292 Arlington and on the adjacent lot. These trees provided significant value to the environment and the neighborhood. They shaded and cooled the 292 home and those surrounding it, and they provided natural stormwater remediation. Since the last council meeting, all but one mature tree on those two lots has been leveled. This is becoming the norm in Elmhurst. Smaller, older homes are torn down, and the lot is filled with the maximum allowed footage of impervious surfaces, leaving green spaces the size of postage stamps and no trees at all. And this does not even touch on the lots of old -- the loss of old growth trees of neighbors affected by lot-to-lot builds and the deep basement digs that terminally damage root systems that cross property lines. Our municipal code requires contractors to compensate the city for lost Parkway trees, yet it imposes the expense and the thousands of dollars borne by a neighbor whose 100-year-old tree must be removed after a tear-down and new build has killed it. Existing homeowners have no say in the matter and no recourse for the diminished value of their property or the immeasurable loss of cooling shade and natural beauty. In the recently released Elmhurst Residents' Guide to City Services, the mayor boasted in his opening letter, "Elmhurst is known for its vibrant tree-lined streets." Our municipal code states in Chapter 6, Article 1, that trees are declared to be a natural public resource, and it is the intent of City Council to protect trees in the interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the present and future citizens of the city. Not only does the removal of trees to make room for larger houses go against these very things Elmhurst claims to value, it has real physical consequences on our environment. The loss of a tree is the loss of a giant sponge, which absorbs, stores, and releases water slowly, providing year-round moisture, cooler microclimates, and water purification. Trees act like umbrellas during heavy rain, intercepting rainfall in their leaves and slowing the flow of water reaching the ground, which reduces the risk of flash flooding from overwhelmed waterways. The delay also allows some of the water to evaporate back into the atmosphere without ever touching the ground. In the heat of summer, trees can help reduce temperatures by up to 10 degrees. The air beneath a tree can be 25 degrees cooler than a nearby parking lot. As we continue to lose mature trees in exchange for larger homes with fewer permeable surfaces, heat is trapped in the concrete and contributes to the heat island effect. Cutting down any healthy tree should require extensive consideration to the impact on neighbors, on the neighborhood, and on the entire community. It should be an action of last resort, not done because it's easier, more profitable for a builder than finding a way to preserve it. 70% of Elmhurst tree canopy is on private property. A tree ordinance will help educate homeowners about the benefits of our trees and the need to preserve them, and I applaud any efforts our elected officials take to promote the ability of all Elmhurst residents to enjoy the benefit of a tree-filled community today and in the future. He that plants trees loves others besides himself. He who cuts them down loves only himself.
Thank you.
Jim Schultz.
My comments are in your pile if you're interested in following along. My name is Jim Schultz, and I'm a member of the newly formed Citizens for Elmhurst Preservation. I would like to highlight some key insights we've gained over the past several weeks. One, preservation vision. Elmhurst's vision for the future is outlined in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and the Comprehensive Plan emphasizes the importance of preserving our significant historical structures and unique character. Unfortunately, it appears that our elected officials, city staff, and the public have gradually lost sight of this critical focus, putting Elmhurst's future at risk. The Historic Preservation Ordinance states, "The city's economic vitality and tax base cannot be maintained and enhanced without regard for Elmhurst heritage represented by its older historic and architecturally significant properties." This truth is more relevant than ever. Two, architectural survey findings. Our review of the 2010 Survey of Architectural Resources on Arlington and Kennelworth Avenues revealed serious concerns. The report warned that continued tear-downs in this area would irreversibly alter our community's character and historic quality. Sadly, this warning has gone unheeded, resulting in the loss of over one-third of the homes recognized for their significance. Three, community sentiment. Residents are not against tear-downs; rather, they are deeply saddened by the loss of our beautiful and historic homes. These tear-downs are irreversible and diminish our community's charm and character. Additionally, there is significant concern about the loss of old growth trees and green spaces that contribute to Elmhurst's appeal. Residents expect our city officials to protect Elmhurst's history and future. They believe we can preserve our cultural heritage, just as other cities in Illinois and across the country have done. Many feel that current city priorities place too much emphasis on real estate tax revenue at the expense of preservation. Unfortunately, this has led to a sense of hopelessness among residents, who have settled for quietly complaining in the background. We are committed to awakening the public and fostering constructive engagement with city officials. We urge city officials, city staff, and residents to collaborate on preserving our historic homes and green spaces. Four, a broader context. The challenges of historic preservation are not unique to Elmhurst. Glen Allen has seen a surge in support for pres -- has seen a surge in support for preservation, evidenced by widespread "Preserve Glen Allen" yard signs. Stories similar to 292 Arlington have emerged across the Chicagoland area. A recent article from Hinsdale highlighted a proposal to demolish an historic home, illustrating the ongoing struggle between preservationists and developers. Hinsdale stands in stark contrast to Elmhurst, having a highly active and empowered Historic Preservation Commission that has educated residents about the value of preservation and established two historic districts. This commission also issues certificates of appropriateness for new builds within those districts. We believe adopting similar measures can help prevent situations like the one at 292 Arlington. In conclusion, I'd like to share a quote from the chair of Hinsdale's Historic Preservation Commission. "Sometimes you have to lose some monumental houses to really gain traction." He emphasized the need for a stronger stance in preservation and went on to say, "There's a little nefarious game going on between certain builders and certain realtors, and they've been preying upon us. Maybe that day is coming to a screeching halt." We hope the same is true for Elmhurst. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Cook.
You'll have to excuse me on this one. I brought some props.
If you want to have them sort -- if they're going to be showing them to the city council or to the audience, you could have them stand up here.
Whatever's most convenient. It's probably instructive to point out that there's a copy of my remarks on the dais in front of all of you that include the photos I'll reference.
Thank you.
There's also some copies of the letter that have been circulated amongst the audience just for ease of understanding.
All right. Thank you. Proceed.
I'm speaking to you today to document my experience as a property owner adjacent to a recent development. The process has alerted me to the fact that our current zoning and building requirements are woefully inadequate to protect the interests of the existing residents of this community. My concerns are neither subjective, nor are they a matter of taste. I believe if the council fails to address the five items I intend to highlight, more Elmhurst residents will be harmed by a similar lack of protection. Number one, there is zero restrictions that I am aware of on excavation on a new build. This means that a new build is allowed to excavate up to the property line, risking the property on the adjacent lots. In my case, the excavation will cost my 100-year-old Elm tree, which is a focal point of my yard. I've received notice from the city that I have 30 days to remove the tree at an $8,000 expense to myself. Lack of oversight on excavation has also caused damage to the foundation of other parcels in other builds in the area. Common-sense guidance on excavation is not included in the June 2024 Revised Public Draft of the Zoning Ordinance. To that end, mandating that excavation cannot extend more than a specified distance into the permissible setback is required. Number two, I learned that setback requirements only apply to above-ground structures. Unregulated below-ground structures, such as basements, or the necessary window wells to provide egress from those basements, can inhibit the access to the backyard of the new build without the use of adjacent properties and the permissions of the owners of those adjacent properties. It also minimizes the available surface area for stormwater management. It is important to note that window wells are not included as a permissible encroachment in Table 10.1 of the Revised Public Draft. Therefore, I feel below-ground structures should be subject to the same setback off -- same offset requirements as the building itself. Number three, Anya, if you could held that up, thank you. Water is allowed to be directed onto neighboring properties. Three, unsightly, surface-level downspouts are pointed directly toward my home. The photo I show in my letter is of pooling, and that photo was taken a mere 45 minutes after the onset of rain. The side yard on the north side of this new property shows a situation that's even more dire. It includes a culvert that is a mere 5 1/2 feet from the foundation of a historic home. A permit for a walkway has been requested that would reduce the permeable surface to almost zero, and it's important to note that this lot line also serves as drainage for the northeast corner of the City View Church parking lot.
Ms. Cook, you're about 3 and 1/2 minutes. I wonder if you can sort of summarize for the next few points.
Certainly. Clear guidance on stormwater is advocated. There is also no ordinance protecting personal trees on properties. I believe previous speakers have addressed that thoroughly. The most important point I'd like to make tonight is the connection between economic diversity and the merger of lots. There's overwhelming consensus that the escalation of home prices in Elmhurst is a troubling trend. This has a direct impact on current residents, be it couples who are unable to downsize once their children have moved on, or growing families who can't afford to grow in their own neighborhood. It seems fairly obvious to me that disallowing the merger of smaller lots would preserve the economic diversity of homes, a goal that is specifically called out by the Comprehensive Plan. I ask that the council take seriously the proposed items for inclusion in the Revised Zoning Ordinance. On behalf of myself and my neighbors, I implore you to give reasonable protection and consideration to those of us who have already invested our families in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy O'Neill.
Hello. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name's Kathy O'Neill. I live at 241 East St. Charles Road. I catch myself saying I live at 292 Arlington, but anyways, I'd like to address affordable housing, and there's three key components I'd like to touch on. The first one I'd like to touch on is affordable housing for seniors. I am a senior citizen of Elmhurst, and I currently rely on Social Security and savings. I'm a widow. And that being said, I certainly would hope that I have the opportunity to remain in my home. I personally don't have any intentions of moving. So that being said, I think overall, as seniors, there's a void. I think there needs to be more support for our aging citizens. I don't specifically have the answer to that, but I think that definitely is a concern. The next concern is in regards to empty nesters. There's a lot of families, lifelong families, that live in Elmhurst that have raised their families, and they're at a point where their home is too large for them, and they'd like to downsize. However, given the current market that we live in, that type of housing isn't available. If someone wants to, say, downsize and move into even a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home, we're looking at a cost of over $400,000. The next issue I'd like to touch on is first-time housing buyers. Since the beginning of this year, we have outpaced sister cities such as Glen Allen, Wheaton, LaGrange, Downers Grove, Villa Park by tens of thousands of dollars on average. It's to the point where I used to know the term starter home. Now, the average price of a home in Elmhurst is upwards of almost $700,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reed Stanton.
Reed Stanton. I live at 348 North Elm, and I'm here to talk about this paper that was put in the agenda called "Develop an EHPC That Works."
Mr. Stanton, could you come a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I want to talk about the EHPC That Works paper that was in your handout. 292 was what sometimes would be called the Black Swan. It's a rare event, totally unprecedented, people were not ready for, that has important consequences. It's led many, many people into shock, disbelief, grief, anger, all the things that come with death. In the paper, it talks about that the elected officials, that the public, mostly the public, have lost focus on historic preservation. I was in the freshman class of September 2019 in the commission. I joined the commission then. In November, I went to a commission meeting. It was a meeting of the North Suburban Alliance of Historic Preservation Commissioners, about 15 of them. Naperville was there, Bruin was probably there, and they basically told me that you needed a private sector something to go with your commission. The commission wasn't going to be enough. After that, I took a deep dive into everything Elmhurst may have ever done in historic preservation and found the report, an analysis that was made in June 2005 about what we want to do here, included stuff like the certified local government they wanted to do, historic districts, came up in a meeting a couple weeks ago, landmarks, public education, an inventory, and some incentives. I'd like to say that if you go through the 17 powers and duties of the existing commission, it's too much. It was too big of an ask, and then everybody went home and left it to them. So I'm very empathetic with the commission itself, and because people weren't paying that much attention, there was an opportunity for it to drift. The recommendations that were presented in this paper, I think I would like to take the public education part and give it to the people. Sign that to the private sector. These people want -- because we all know it's very important. When I was at the museum, they gave me the white gloves to go through pages and pages of tours that had been given. I have one page that I want to just talk about. It's Thursday, June 8, 1978. It's a little map of a walking tour. It has house walk committee. There's six people on the housewalking committee, and there's a hostess for each of the houses they're going to go visit. And the first is president of the American Association of University Women. The second is the president of the Elmhurst District School Board. The third is a DuPage County member. The fourth is Elmhurst Garden Club, and the president -- and the fifth is the president, Elmhurst College Faculty and Women. What I'm saying is the private sector is the best place to do public education, the most important and necessary thing, and then the commission is left to do what the private sector wants. And the goals of what they're supposed to do in the future, how we get together moving forward, is for the private sector to say--
Mr. Stanton, you have about 3 and 1/2 minutes, so if you would be mindful.
Okay. The private sector says what they want. So they give the goal. Do you want historic districts? We can work on that. But without the guidance of the private sector, the commission naturally can drift. Thank you.
Mr. Stanton, is one of the papers up here, one that you provided, on the dais?
Yes.
Yes. What's the title of it?
I was provided by someone else, and I think it should have his name.
We added it.
I responded to--
Added it about 4:30, the names of some of -- it was missing originally from the emails.
I've got it. Thank you.
It's on -- yeah, it's on board docs. Dan Virgil.
But it's not on here.
Dan Virgil, 598 South Fairview. I wanted to speak in support of ADU's auxiliary dwelling units as an option for more affordable housing. These have the possibility to help a variety of different groups, seniors, young people that, you know, are trying to move into Elmhurst but can't afford it otherwise, those that maybe work in Elmhurst but are not in high-paying jobs and -- but they want to live where they work. So this might be an option there for those kinds of folks as well. ADUs also have the ability to make a community more resilient, as it can provide an income source to homeowners, and it also provides, you know, more diversity of housing within the community. I understand that this -- the ADUs was originally in the new zoning update but was pulled out. I'm not sure I understand the concerns on this. I would kind of expect that ADUs would follow the same building codes that everything else does. They would follow setbacks. They would follow lot coverage. You know, they may or may not be within an auxiliary structure. They may be within the primary structure, but I would assume the same codes that we have for everything else would apply. So again, you know, ADUs, I think, is, you know, a very good option to address the affordable housing crisis that we have, and I would like to see them added back into the zoning update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter D. Philippia.
Good evening. Peter D. Philippus. I live at 192 North Glade. The topic for me is sidewalks. I've put a lot of work into trying to orchestrate getting the village to put in sidewalks between Second and Third. Mr. Hill's been speaking to me about that on various occasions. For some reason, we're getting a lot of resistance on that. A lot of engineering work has been done already, and we came out with a proposal of almost $17,500 per resident for 250 square feet of sidewalk between Second and Third. The other thing I wanted to address, there was an article in the Elmhurst Patch that stated that the residents did not express enough interest in sidewalks. That is totally false. The paper that was sent to us was either a yes or a no. Residents didn't want to say no, because they do want it, but they didn't want to say yes, because they don't want to pay $17,500 for sidewalks over the next 10 years, whatever that tax would increase would be. So I think this really needs to be evaluated based on a few things. One is public safety. There's a lot of kids that have recently moved into these blocks between North Avenue and Second Avenue, and kids are walking in the streets to the bus stops. Kids are walking in the street to go to the park. They're standing on the curbs to wait for buses. We've had an incident that cars are speeding down Glade Avenue. I've had an incident where one reckless driver smashed into a mailbox, my neighbor's mailbox. God forbid somebody was walking their dog or an elderly person was walking. Would have been a disaster, to say the least. So I'm asking the council to reevaluate what they're asking the residents to participate in this sidewalk petition. A lot of work went into this. From what I understood, there was been several petitions that have failed, 20-plus, and I'm not really understanding why this is not something that the village wants to invest in. I ask you all, as your council up there, if you didn't have sidewalks for your kids and your mom and dad and everybody else who is using these sidewalks, how would you feel? I know a lot of you have sidewalks in front of your homes, and we're willing to participate in it, but the amount that you're asking the residents to pay is astronomical. Furthermore, I don't even know where this number came from, to be quite honest with you. A lot of engineering was done. I saw people out there taking measurements, doing things. I asked the people that were in charge where this number came from, and I still don't have a clear answer on that. There was that article, as I mentioned, from David Giuliani in the Elmhurst Patch, and again, I had contacted him and made it very clear that this is not something that the residents don't want. They absolutely do want it. I petitioned from Second to Third, but I know and for a fact that people from North Avenue all the way to Second would prefer to have sidewalks on that street, especially with all the cutoffs, because we're the only open street from North Avenue, and that's what people cut down, raced to Second Avenue to get back to West Avenue. So I ask you to reconsider and really look, evaluate the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Eckberg.
Hello, council. I'm Kathleen Eckberg, and my husband and I live on the north side at 677 Vanocan Street, and I wanted to comment briefly about three general items. First, a comment about maybe a technical video or TV issue. Fairly recently, when I was watching council meetings on YouTube, I saw there were two versions of a particular Monday council meeting. One version was longer in length in minutes than the other, maybe by 10 minutes. I'm not sure why there was a shorter and longer version of the same meeting, but wanted to mention it. Second, I would ask the council to seriously consider asking a Republican state federal candidate, just as Chewie Garcia spoke here, to be invited to speak before the council, if that is possible. It would give a fair and balanced viewpoint to the council members and to the residents of Elmhurst. And third-- And third, a possible problem the community may experience, like I have experienced with postal mail. Specifically, it may be possible that your postal mail carrier, like mine, is negatively affecting delivery of your postal mail. For at least the past two years, on numerous occasions, I have had my mail not properly and legally delivered because the mail carrier wrongly and even recently documented it as COVID-19, which was canceled over one year ago. It can cause legal problems, financial problems, and other significant problems for anybody in the neighborhood and community. Thank you to the council.
Thank you.
That's all that's saying.
That is the end of the list of those who have signed up to make public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment but did not have an opportunity to sign in? All right. We will close public comment. We don't respond. We hear what you're saying. We appreciate that you come out and give us your thoughts and insight. We will move on to announcements. I will start with an announcement. We usually don't address national issues here at City Council, and I know that when we were asked to entertain the Palestinian-Israeli ceasefire issue, we did not do so because it was not deemed to be in our lane. I think I was the one that deemed it not to be. And I know that when the Russian-Ukrainian invasion occurred, we, a number of us spoke about our concern with that. I don't think there was any question about the right or wrong of that particular invasion. This weekend, there was an unsuccessful attempt on former President Trump. And I'm hoping that we can agree as a nation that a candidate can be excluded from office through the ballot box, but not through an act of violence. We can't condone this kind of violence, particularly when it affects our right to choose a President of the United States. Perhaps our polarized politics may have contributed to this, perhaps not. I just hope that we can move forward in a respectful way and denounce those who would impose the political will through violence. Any other announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
5.1 executive session meeting minutes of the Elmhurst City Council on June 17th, 2024. 5.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 1st, 2024. 5.3 accounts payable, July 15th, 2024. 5.4 referral tree ordinance. 5.5 referral no mo. 5.6 referral TIF incentives. 5.7 an ordinance granting a variation from the interior side yard setback requirement to the property commonly known as 370 North Addison Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.8 an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development with a site development allowance for the construction of additions and facade renovations to the building located on the property commonly known as 300 West Grand Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.9 ordinance rezoning map amendment and approving a final plat of subdivision for the construction of a single-family residence on the property commonly known as 292 South Arlington Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.10 an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Jackson Elementary School, Parent Teacher Association, and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. And 5.11 ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a vacant land contract and accepting a grant of utility easement in the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois.
All right. City manager, would you like to comment on item 511?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a contract to sell a piece of property that the city owns at 644 South Bryan for the amount of $282,000.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any aldermen would like to remove, either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Irby.
5.9, Mayor.
5.9. Anyone else? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5.9. Alderman Jensen with a motion. Alderman Cahill with a second. Clerk Tamer.
Cahill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini absent Brennan?
Aye.
Irby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Grimis absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. The consent agenda minus item 5.9 is approved. Onto item 5.9. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning map amendment and approving a final plat of subdivision for the construction of a single-family residence on the property commonly known as 292 South Arlington Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
We have a motion to approve item 5.9. Alderman Deuter with a motion. Second, Alderman Park. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a zoning case that was discussed extensively at the last meeting. I don't have any further comments.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on 5.9? Alderman Irby.
Thank you, Mayor. I think 5.9 is a two-phase, we had a map amendment, and now we have a final plat of survey. Again, this case has not happened for 32 years plus. It's a unique case because the property was split between two zoning districts, RE and R1. With respect to, I will not be speaking to the map amendment, that's passed and gone. The plat of survey, there are two sections in the code applicable to subdivision. One is 2308, and the other one is, bear with me, 2309. So 2308 is the non-administrative version that allows us to go from a tentative plat to a final plat. The tentative plat takes a full council action, as well as the final plat takes a full council action. The city has decided to go with 2309, section C, which allows for an administrative plat of survey. And you're wondering, what is that, Alderman Irby? Well, if we have one acre or greater, then they don't have that choice. But if it's one acre or less, the city planner can elect may, under the code, they don't have to, but they may do an administrative one, to where they'll combine the two lots. Well, I'm guessing if I looked at all the parcels and properties in Elmhurst, we would have very few that, when you combine them, would be over one acre. It would be a rare, rare, super rare bird. So the city elected to do the may instead of go through the details of 2308. So tonight, we're talking about a final plat. So I just want to make that clear where we are tonight and what we're voting on. I appreciate the city attorney giving me some insight on that today. So in conclusion, there's two issues here. The first one, I want to speak to the process. In my opinion, what we've learned the last two months on this case is there were many process flaws with this case that highlighted the inadequacies of our administrative procedures, our ordinances, and our failure to use the comprehensive plan as it was intended. Many in Elmhurst have given up and lost hope and will no longer provide input to the city's strategic planning. I am committed to keep the interest and the long-term well-being of Elmhurst viable and will keep my energy and efforts forward on the vision and hope with respect to our affordable housing, our housing stock, our fairness in our zoning map that has now been moved. It's a new day. Secondly, I would like to speak on behalf of the second homeowner of 292. I will not give her name out of her privacy, but she's the second owner after 1928, Mr. Phillips and his wife built the house. When they built the house, they acquired the second parcel and got half of it and moved into their hospice up until past 1957, when Mr. Phillips died. The estate held on to the second parcel, the south one, that's a part of the map amendment, until 1966. That's when owner number two arrived, who was going to come tonight and speak. She was not able to come tonight. I was saddened by the news, and so I would like to speak on her behalf just briefly. They purposely took that south parcel, Mr. Phillips, and he kept it before the transaction to the second owner. Then in 1986, owner number two, the one who was coming tonight, her and her husband decided they wanted to buy the south parcel back. You're wondering, why did they do that? It was to keep the green space between those two properties. So they held on to that from 1986 until they left. Then the third owner, third owner came in June of 2018. And subsequent to that, the person who was coming tonight, her husband died in September 25th, 2020. At his funeral in Glencoe, he was a renowned printer here in town. Your gold emblem on your baseball cards, that was courtesy of him. At his memorial, it said donations in his honor should be money sent for planting trees. That was in his obituary. So I just wanted to make her voice somewhat known here on council that there was protection of that property until the last homeowner came, until the map amendment. That south parcel was always green, never had a structure. And I will be voting no, as I did last time. Thank you. Turn back my time to the mayor.
Thank you. Other discussion on this item? Clerk Tamer.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini absent Brennan?
Aye.
Irby?
No.
Deuter?
Aye.
Grimis absent. Ten ayes, one nay, three absent.
Ten ayes, one nay, three absent. 5.9 passes. I don't participate in the debate on these as mayor and chair of this, but I will say there's a suggestion that administrative procedure was not properly followed, and I've followed the procedure myself as it's gone through, and I take exception to that. Our staff does what they're required to do. Sometimes, the way these things lay out require a result that doesn't make people happy. But when you see the number of votes by the commission in this council, which have been largely, with one exception, recognizing that they have done what they had to do to comply with our ordinances. So I think the administrative procedures have been followed here. Committee reports. 6-1. Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the existing new sidewalk installation policy be amended to include a 75% city, 25% property owner cost share, a positive response rate of greater than 50%, counting only yes and no votes while excluding non-responses from official votes, and supporting city construction of sidewalk on connecting short blocks when two sidewalks on parallel streets are completed, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary city council documents. Signed, Alderman Emily Bastido, Chair. Alderman Brian P. Cahill, Vice Chair. And Alderman Karen Shenko.
I'd like to have a motion to approve 6.1.
And Alderman Brink.
Thank you.
You weren't included on here originally.
We'll see a later add-on. All right.
I'm sure you're on the report, though.
We have a motion to put-
Read what's there. I don't know where you were.
Motion by Alderman Bastido, second by Alderman Cahill. Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can confirm on the-
And then Alderman Bram.
He is on there, yes.
All right.
I'm sure he was not worried about that. So this report is a result of a September 27th, 2023 referral, asking our committee to review the current sidewalk installation policy. So this was one half of the referral that we were asked to look at. So for those who aren't aware, the city does have a policy, a way for blocks without sidewalks, to go through a process to have sidewalks put on their block. And it is kind of a long process, but I want to lay it out because there were some important changes to our current policy. So currently, interested parties circulated a petition to collect signatures from property owners willing to participate in the cost share program. 60% or greater of the property owners on the block must sign the petition for the city to consider their request, and it's one vote per property. City staff verifies petition signatures, confirms there are those of the property owners, provided that greater than 60% have responded or have signed. The city holds informational open houses. Preliminary sketches, plans of the sidewalks are completed to determine the impact on individual properties. Colored ribbons are tied on affected trees and shrubs to indicate potential landscaping impact to the neighborhood. The preliminary plans are on display at the open house. General cost estimates and an explanation of the special service area method of financing are provided. Following the open house, city staff then sends an official city survey via US Mail to the affected property owners. The survey package includes information from the open house and gives property owners four weeks to respond. City staff collects surveys and compiles information for our committee, the Public Works and Building Committee. Unreturned surveys are counted as a no vote. If the returned surveys show greater than 60% of the property owners on the block support new sidewalks, then the Public Works Committee reviews all factors, makes a recommendation for constructions of the sidewalk to the full council. If the council approves the committee's recommendations, staff is directed to create an SSA. And the SSA step of this is dictated by state statute, but it requires greater than 50% of property owners to submit petitions against. And if more than 50% of those residents submit against, then the SSA project is terminated, and it can't be considered for another year. But if there aren't objections, then city staff engineers sidewalks, completes the plans and specifications for bidding, and then sidewalks may be constructed within the next construction season, subject to funding by city council. So as you can see, it is a long process. It requires a great amount of staff, time, and work. And so we really wanted to consider, you know, this whole policy and what makes it successful or not successful. Because actually, we asked staff for a lot of data, and the data they provided included a list of all of the times that this process has been undergone since 2004. So it's been initiated 41 times, meaning blocks have asked for the information 41 times, and it has resulted in the construction of sidewalks five times. So the last time was 2009. It was the block of one of our very own aldermen, Alderman Cahill, which is actually very helpful to have him on the committee discussing this, since he had gone through the process himself in 2009. I thought that was very helpful. But it has been 15 years since the last successful sidewalk process has been completed. So we met and discussed this over 11 different meetings. We asked staff for information from other communities and what programs they have. There were actually very few block cost share policies in place. Many communities have moved to a master sidewalk plan where streets without sidewalks are filled in over time by the municipality at no cost to residents. So after careful consideration, the committee recommends the following changes to Elmhurst sidewalk policy in the hopes to make it more successful, and again, to make the large amount of staff time that goes to this, you know, worthwhile, and also just to make our process more successful, because we think that sidewalks make our community safer, more walkable, better curb appeal, and it's just a goal that we have as a community. So we recommend changing the cost share from a 50-50 split with the residents and the city to a 75-25, where the city pays 75% and the residents pay 25%. Require greater than 50% positive responses to the petition process, as well as the vote after the open house. Those are currently 60%. So we say just greater than 50%. The SSA will stay 50% where it is now. We ask that you count actual votes instead of the lack of responses being counted as no votes. Allow alternative financing options, such as a homeowners association paying their share of the cost at the time of installation, and that's something that has happened recently. And this would just formalize it, because that is actually very advantageous to the city. It saves a lot of time, because the HOA was allowed to pay for their cost share upfront. It saved a lot of time, and it's something we want to encourage. And then formalize the city's practice of completing short blocks where two long blocks have been completed or where there is a sidewalk gap. So I tried to be as sure as possible. I know we have a storm coming, but I'm happy to take questions.
I think after, what, six or seven committee meetings, we can have a little longer report.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Open to discussion. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a huge proponent of walking and biking, and I'm pleased with the progress that the city has made in this area. To quickly highlight that progress, we created a walking and biking working group, which is now known as the Walk and Rollers Working Group. We added our bike, we updated our bike and pedestrian plan. We included community connectivity and safety improvements in our strategic plan, and we've taken a comprehensive approach to neighborhood traffic studies that incorporates walking and biking. It used to be that the only way available to expand the sidewalk network in Elmhurst was through the cost sharing policy, which is what we're discussing tonight. However, that's no longer the case. Most of us know that Alderman Palmsky and Jensen asked the city to evaluate a potential change to the sidewalk policy to eliminate the financial contribution of affected properties. After extensive discussion over the course of at least eight meetings in 2022 and 2023, the Public Works Committee sent a report to the council last year in 2023 that had two recommendations. One, the sidewalk policy should not change, and two, the city should pursue TIF funding and grant funding for the identified priority sidewalk installations, which were in the area around Crestview Park, on one side of Crestview, one side of Indiana, and one side of Van Aken. As indicated in the report, the city would fund 100% of the cost of this project. The significance of that report in 2023, which was passed unanimously by the full city council, is that it is, I believe, the first time in recent history that the city is committing to a major expansion of sidewalks without requiring a private contribution. My concern with what we're discussing tonight is that a new cost sharing policy will serve as a distraction to creating sidewalks in our highest priority areas. I support most of the changes recommended in the committee's report, and I would be an enthusiastic supporter if it didn't include a change to the cost share ratio. We have a set of approved priority sidewalks in that area around Crestview Park that are awaiting funding, and the Public Affairs and Safety Committee is considering a sidewalk master plan that I expect will identify our next set of new sidewalk projects. I would prefer to see the city's energy and resources focused on those highest priority sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Alderman Hill, and Alderman Brennan, and Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, Mayor. So I hear the, you know, I hear our discussion on the, Alderman Deuter's discussion on the Crestview project, and I'm not quite sure why that project would obviate the need to revisit the cost sharing process. I don't, we have one project in process right now. That doesn't mean that that process is going to continue. I hope it continues. I hope we continue to build sidewalks across Elmhurst, finish the sidewalk network, because a sidewalk, to me, its main value is that it connects to other sidewalks, because the network is what's important there. The thing that I'm concerned about with not changing cost sharing, first off, it's a failed policy. If it works only five times in 20 years, I don't know why we leave a policy like that on the books. And if we were to adjust the votes, looking at the vote, changing no votes or no response votes into nothing instead of no votes, that would have only changed three projects within the last 20 years. So it wouldn't have really moved the needle. It still would be a failed policy. And Shaft stared at this document where they showed the, the outcomes of all the petitions over the last 20 years, and how many votes went this way and that way, and what the response rate was. So we had that data available from staff. So I'm just really not sure why we would be advocating to leave a policy on the books that doesn't work, and with a little tweak will still not work. And of course, we've had comment here today that the real thing that I think causes sidewalks not to be built through this process is the sticker shock that they get when they get the amount that they have to contribute. It's obvious to me that changing the cost sharing amount is what's going to move the needle on getting sidewalks built. And yes, I'd love it if we build more using the Crestview model, but we have no assurances that that's going to be the same way going forward. I don't know, even if we did have that assurance, why we wouldn't have a cost sharing procedure in place and update it after 20 years of mostly failure, which creates a lot of animosity, too, between citizens that do a lot of work to organize and generate these petitions, and then we come up with numbers that most of the time fail or don't advance in the process. A lot of staff time, a lot of animosity. I can't see any reason why we wouldn't support all the work that the committee's put into this over 11 meetings, and I am in full support of the report and the process they went through to arrive at this recommendation. Thanks.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm generally in support of the report. I think most of the changes are very favorable. That said, it's my belief that, you know, there's been limited participation in the 50-50 sidewalk program, because block, blocks truly are, you know, divided. There are some passionately for sidewalks, and there are some passionately not for sidewalks. And as Alderman Deuter stated, less than two years ago, this topic came before the public works, and at that time, the committee and council voted to not change the policy, but turned our focus to closing sidewalk gaps associated with safe routes to school. I think that's very worthy, and I think the, the part of this referral is in front of, you know, public affairs and safety, and we have some, some work to be done there. But the primary driver at the time, less than two years ago, you know, for coming to this conclusion, was a resident survey that was, where staff surveyed residents in northeast Elmhurst bounded by York, Lake Frontage, Parker, Adele, Emroy, and Wrightwood. We received 355 responses. The survey showed that 28% supported sidewalks under the 50-50 plan. The survey also showed that 36% supported sidewalks with zero cost to the residents. And the survey lastly showed 36% supported no sidewalks at all. So every block in Elmhurst, there is some mix of people for and against. And so I do think that the tweaks that are being suggested will force people to participate, especially with the, the no votes or non-votes being, not, no longer being counted as a yes. And I appreciate Alderman Hill's analysis with respect that maybe that won't move the needle. But I do think it's, it's worthy of changing the, the policy based on the, based on some of the, the data that's come out of the committee. So I'm not here to relive the past, as I do appreciate the, the work that the committee did. You know, I know these are lengthy discussions, and I, I have my head around, you know, policy changes here, but, but I, I do believe that, that I, I don't support moving from a 50-50 to 75-25 with 75% being paid by the city and 25 being paid by the residents. That said, I'd like to make a motion to change the contribution percentages in the report from 75-25 to 50-50.
All right. We have a motion to change the percentage contribution from 50-50 to, sorry, from 75-25 to 50-50. Is there a second on that motion? Alderman Deuter. All right. We're now discussing the proposed amendment to change the percentage. So discussion on the amendment. Alderman Bastido.
The committee obviously discussed this percentage, the percentage where we ended, and, you know, other percentages in between, but we really felt that the reason this policy has failed 36 times is because of the cost. The reason there are so many no votes when there are no votes is because of the cost. And most recently, as you heard the residents saying, some of the houses were asked to pay $16,000 just for their share of the sidewalk in front of their house. And so we don't think 50-50 is the right place to be, and I stand behind the 25-75 and ask you to vote no for the amendment.
Anyone, before we go back to the mover, the shaker and the mover. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So I, I respect the, the views of the committee on this. I really do. But somehow, some way, and I tried to get the percentage of sidewalks in the city, it's a very high percentage. I'm not going to even guess on it, but it's a high percentage. There are sidewalks throughout the city, and, you know, I'm not a historian, but I can pretty confidently sit here and say that, you know, either the residents put them in, maybe they did it under some, some sort of program at the time. I, myself, I put my own sidewalks in. I wasn't even aware of any, any program. I replaced my sidewalk and paid for it. So that, that said, I understand the increase in the cost, but, but I'm more comfortable. I, I would have loved to have participated in a 50-50 program. And, you know, I understand the committee's position on this, and I respect it, but, you know, I, I would like to see the 50-50 stay. I think that's more than, than fair. I do like the changes being suggested by the committee, other than that. Thank you.
Alderman Hill and Alderman Deuter.
So we talked about the Crestview project, and right now, that's a one-time thing that's happened, that project and the streets attached to that that are funded entirely by the city. But I, I hope we realize that if we vote on keeping a 50-50 cost share, we're keeping a failed policy that is the only way to get sidewalks right now in Elmhurst. That is a, is a process that we have, right? So we're saying that we're going to keep the process that hasn't worked, that we spent, you know, a better part of a year talking about, that we asked a committee to look at and talk about, and we're going to keep it the way it is, essentially, that the cost is not the factor that's stopping sidewalks from being, you know, approved and in place and put in through Elmhurst. So I, I really can't imagine a reason why, if this is the only policy we have, and maybe we'll supersede it with a better policy in the future, maybe Crestview project will be a model which will expand across all of Elmhurst. And when that happens, you know, I'll, I'll sing its praises. But right now, remember that if you, if you're leaving this 50-50 in plant, in place, if you vote for that, you're voting on the failed process. That is the only way to do it right now. So maybe future things will render that irrelevant, but I cannot see how anybody could in good conscience vote to keep it the way it is, essentially, when we know that cost is the main driver.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I have lots of confidence in the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that they will identify our next set of projects that can be approached in the same way that we have approached the safe routes for school sidewalks around the Crest, around Crestview Park and North Elmhurst. That said, you know, that project itself has still not received funding. We are still looking for sources of funding for that. Right now, as far as the city's funding for sidewalks, we allocate every year $50,000 for this cost sharing program. If a project, using Glade as an example, were to be brought forth, and we heard how much work it is to bring forth one of those projects, if that project comes forward, the city's estimated cost for that project is $213,000. So that project moves forward, subject to funding availability. My concern is we create an expectation that after all of the work that residents put in, that would be the expectation that that gets funded. And my concern is that we don't have an identified source of funding to do the high priority sidewalks, either the one that we've already approved or the ones that I expect will be approved next, and support the cost sharing program. So that is my concern, and that's why I support the amendment to do a 50-50 cost share, leave it at that. I support the other changes. I hope that we will see more interest in that program that will attract private funding to allow us to do more, but if not, I expect that we will get to many sidewalks through the approach that you're discussing now at Public Affairs and Safety. Thank you.
Alderman Bastido and Alderman Bram.
Yeah. Alderman Deuter, correctly.
I'm going to go to Alderman Park after.
Oh.
I forgot you had to. Go, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Correctly points out that, you know, if Glade went through this process, there would, could be an expectation to spend $213,000. But without these changes, there's still an expectation that the city would spend $142,000. So with or without these changes, the expectation is there, and the $50,000 that was put into the current budget falls short. So whether you vote to 50-50 or 75-25, the city council would have to still consider the same issue, which is, are we going to find money for this block to add a sidewalk? Or are we not? Are we going to put it off another year? So yeah, the dollar amount changes, but the decision would still have to be made, because the same expectation is there.
Alderman Park.
Thank you. I believe that we have sidewalks throughout town with a few exceptions here and there, and in general, on the north side, the area that was annexed decades ago, we have it for safety. We have sidewalks all around, and I believe the intent of our current sidewalk cost share policy is to provide residents with a way to partner with the city to install sidewalks on their block for the safety and the betterment of the whole community. Sidewalks serve far more than just the house that they sit in front of. The last decades, as was explained by Alderman Bastido, staff reported that this policy has not succeeded in that intent. If we are offering something to residents to be able to engage in, to take part in, you know, evolving our community, we have to ensure that it is successful. And if, as voted in civil servants, if we notice a policy is not working, I think it's our duty to try to analyze it and try to refine it and help it evolve so that it can function in the intent that, that we have, in order for the residents to be able to be engaged in it, and to make use of all the time and energy that the residents and staff are putting into it. So I support the policy as updated by our Public Works Department with the edits that they have made, including the 25% resident contribution and the 75% city contribution, because I too agree that that could help tip the needle for projects becoming successful, because I am feeling like the framing of the questions of whether people are for sidewalks or not for sidewalks, people not for paying for sidewalks are being lumped into that they are just overall not for sidewalks. And I think, I hope that this would provide a path, pun intended, for people to be able to put these vital parts of people, infrastructure, in more areas throughout their community. And I do not see this update to any policy as taking away from any of the good work that we have that came out of Public Works last year when I was on it, to install some safe routes to schools. These things can be in conjunction and as a supplement to any sort of master plan that we put forth, decide, if we decide we want to do something like that down the road, to systematically and incrementally build a network for safety for our community. So that's why I'm going to be voting yes, and I hope people will join me.
You're voting yes on the amendment? I think you spoke against the amendment, right?
Oh, no. I mean, I'm spoken, I'm voting yes for the policy. This gets a little tricky for me.
My job is to keep clarity here. That's what I'm doing. All right.
I support the original report.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I believe Alderman Brennan already stated that he's not here to provide history. I am here to provide history. With that said, one of the reasons why I ran for Alderman 21 years ago was because my area has no sidewalks. I don't want to say I was the original, but I was probably one of the original who went door to door up and down my street from end to end, from Lake Street, Frontage, all the way to Wright, or not Wrightwood, but North End, knocking on my neighbor's door as a new resident here in town and asking them if they would like to see a sidewalk with my own hand-created petition. with my own hand-created petition. At the time, the city didn't have a pre-printed petition to distribute, and we didn't have a policy to distribute. With that, all my residents with me in front of them at their front door seemed eager and signed on. I think only one individual said, "No, thank you, not interested." Ironically enough, when the city came with their petition, and there was no type of public forum where we marked what streets and any of that, but when the city came with their survey, it was the reverse outcome. Everybody, I think, except maybe me and one other neighbor, said no versus yes. So that was my introduction to how challenging sidewalks are here in the city of Elmhurst, my firsthand account of trying to get sidewalks installed on my streets or my blocks in my neck of town. And still, as we sit here today, my neck of town, I think, only has one side of Howard be successful in these 20-plus years. Since that instance, my own personal anecdotal evidence there, we do have a policy, and I was on this same committee when that policy was developed. It wasn't the best. It's still not. Even if this moved forward today, it's still not the best that it could be, but it is definitely, the proposals that are being made today are definitely a heck of a lot better than they were, I don't know, the 15-plus years ago when the policy was initiated. It's interesting that we even have good conscience to say, "Hey, Mr. Property Owner, can you pay 50% of this public asset?" We're asking our own residents to pay for a public asset that they don't even own. It's not on their property. It is a public asset. So right there, to me, it is a challenge to even have a policy that says that. We're just trying to tip the scales, and I've been challenged about that in the past when our discussion started on this topic. Yes, we're trying to tip the scales to make it more equitable for everybody to be able to have sidewalks in front of their house. As Alderman Park has stated, and I believe others have already stated, sidewalks are not just for the property owner, it's for everybody, everybody within the area, anybody who wants to walk in the neighborhood. That doesn't mean just the people who live there. We have Crestview Park in the area. That could be anybody who visits Crestview Park, wants to take a jog around town. I would recommend not doing that on our city streets due to just the vehicular challenges we have at times in the neighborhood. So I think that this is, the way we are proposing this draft report is the way to go with a 75%, 25% homeowner or property owner. The other challenge that we weren't able to overcome is the challenge of utilizing the SSA to pay for the sidewalks, and this gives us, and I believe Alderman Bastido already discussed it, it tilts how much one resident is paying versus the other because an SSA is based off of the EAV of the property. Because of that, one resident for the same linear feat would be paying potentially more than another resident right next to him. That's not fair. We did include in this policy, proposed policy changes, a way to maybe not do or utilize the SSA if the property owner's on the block and figure out a way to pay for it upfront. So that does kind of open the door for eliminating that challenge, and that challenge does, as my Alderman to my right could actually attest to, he lived it. You know, it pits neighbors versus neighbors. We're not here to pit people against each other, and I believe, I know years ago, because of this instance on Gladys, there were literally neighbors who were good friends for many years, if not decades, that stopped talking to each other because our policy. That is, at least in my perspective, the reality. Our policy called neighbors against neighbors, and they stopped talking to each other, at least for a short period of time. We're here not to make easy decisions, we're here to make hard decisions, and believe me, sidewalks has been the probably top three, if not the number-one challenge ever discussed in the dais. If you're new, if you're old, if you're a veteran, if you just got elected the other, last year, it is a tough topic to do. And the reason why is some of the instances in our policy, the funding is part of it. The funding is a major part of it, in my estimation, and if it's not a major part of it, we'll soon find out if we move forward with the 75-25 split. This will be the answer. If we still don't see any petitions coming forward or successful petitions coming forward, maybe it wasn't just the funding, maybe there's more to it. And that's why that referral was in two parts, and hopefully, we can see some results from incorporating what other communities have done and the city paying for 100% of sidewalks and prioritizing throughout town. It was mentioned in regards to the Crestview-Vanocque in Indiana project. It seems to me that that project was pretty much voted on and approved because it was constrained. And what I mean by constrained is it will move forward if we have funding. I believe Alderman Deuter even mentioned it. It's my understanding that we have funding for Crestview, and that's the TIF funding. I thought that our legal counsel has researched that and came back with the answer that we have TIF funding. Now, has it been allocated or not, or have we gone through the legal process? That's another story. But it's my understanding that legally, we are able to use TIF funding for Crestview since it does connect to the actual TIF. The other two streets that are proposed, I agree, we don't have any funding to this day. But I'll remind you, everybody on this council, we spent 50-plus million dollars on stormwater detention throughout the city of Elmhurst. The majority of that was not in this side of town that doesn't have sidewalks, it is further south and even in the central part. We were able to find $50 million plus for stormwater. Why? Because it benefits the community as a whole. Sidewalks benefit the community as a whole. We are obligated to do the best by every resident in the town, and I am asking that we do what we can to enable sidewalks moving forward. This policy, hopefully, it's a short-term policy, and we'll have a master plan before the end of the year. I'm not committing anybody to that. But I will say, though...
Alderman Bram, just if you would, because of...
It's over five minutes, is what you're trying to tell me?
It's about 10, but if you would, please address the amendment, and then we'll get back onto the report.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. With that said, I will wrap up. I believe it is the right thing to do for a split of 75-25 and only committing the property owner to spend 25% of a public asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have your hand up, Alderman Brennan?
No.
All right. All right. Anyone else on the amendment?
So for point of reference, if you're following along in your report, the effect would be to remove the first full paragraph on page two that begins with, "First, the committee proposes a change from 50 city slash 50 property." It would take that out, which would, sorry, to a 75 city 25. So the effect of the motion is to remove that, and we would not go to 75-25. If you vote for the amendment, it would stay at 50-50. All right. Everyone clear on what we're voting on, the amendment? With that being said, Clerk Tamer.
Hill?
No.
Schenko?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Bram?
No.
Cahill?
No.
Toledo absent, Park?
No.
Nudera?
No.
Bastido?
No.
Nardini absent, Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
No.
Deuter?
Aye.
Bremis absent. Two ayes, nine nays, three absent.
Two ayes, nine nays, three absent, amendment fails. We're back to the report. Any further discussion on the report? Alderman Bastido.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address a couple of things brought up by Alderman Deuter. So she referenced the traffic study, bike and ped plan, and a couple of other things, this progress that we have made to make our city, you know, to improve walkability and other things, and I agree with that. And the three KLOA traffic studies actually say that sidewalks are always preferred where possible in order to create a safe space for pedestrians to travel without sharing the roadway with vehicles. And the bike and ped plan has the word sidewalk in it 92 times. I won't read all of them, but number one on the list of priority locations for pedestrian improvements is an outline of where the city could target sidewalk improvements and installations that fill in gaps with connections. So I do think that we, you know, the efforts that we have gone to to make this city better, to make it more walkable, to make it safer, include improvements to sidewalks. There's a lot of room for improvements. I know it's not a majority of the city that's without sidewalks, but it's a big part, and to the people who live there, it really matters. And I appreciate that the committee, over a year ago, did make progress. I would not say that it was significant progress. It was one project, three streets. It was an expansion. It wasn't a major expansion, and this is an effort to keep that work going. So we need a policy that works, and I hope everyone votes in favor of these changes.
All right. Alderman Nudera, then Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. First of all, I support the report. However, I ask that all the residents on the block, for whatever reason, are contacted and given a yes or a no, and there's no gray area, so that it doesn't come as a surprise when a project goes through that they're not informed. So whatever means possible, communication is taken place for all residents, yes or no? I think that's the way the policy should follow.
Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, most of what I would have said has been said, so I'll keep it short, and there's a lot of weathering coming here. But I want to thank the committee for all the work they put in on this. I know it's been a lot of meetings, and, you know, I really do appreciate, I hope it does lead to more sidewalks, and I hope that the rest of the referral that's in front of Public Affairs and Safety leads us to more expansive master plan that, you know, builds on the progress we made a couple of years ago to get safe routes to school. You know, we hit some major ones, we hit all the safe routes, I'd like to see those in there, and so on and so forth. But I support this report, and again, thank you for all the work you guys put in.
Additional discussion? Alderman Brennan.
So first off, I appreciate all the discussion on the topic, and I certainly respect all points of view, so I will support the report at 75-25. I do think the changes are worthy of being approved, and let's see what happens with them. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Clerk Tamer?
Oh, yeah.
All right. If you want discussion, usually you call the board.
I have nothing else to say, no, Liz. Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent, Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini absent, Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Bremis absent. 11 ayes, zero nays, three absent.
11 ayes, zero nays, three absent, the report passes. Yeah, I'm going to, we have to get out of here, apparently, but I want to go back. We have one failed vote after I talked about procedure 5.11 did pass, but it really didn't because it requires a vote of three-quarters of the City Council, which it did not have. But I'm going to call it for a vote again because the corporate authorities are permitted to vote. I didn't vote, I will vote. Any questions on that? Okay. So any further?
This is for the sale of property, the 644 Bryan Wardens.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 511. So any further discussion on 511? Calling it back. All right. Clerk Tamer, recall the roll.
Hill?
Oh, aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent, Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini absent, Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Bremis absent. Mayor Levin?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, three absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, three absent, 511 does pass. I'm going to skip over reports and recommendations of elected officials. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion, Alderman Jensen, second to Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.